I'm assuming that's information that he's collected, that he has collected. So I can't dispute his numbers. I have no way of doing that. I'll just accept them as they are, okay? And use them for comparison, but I don't always agree with it. Drivers and wages, benefits of workers' comp. He says that takes up 27 to 40 percent of the contract for those money. Ava's the same thing. In any sense administrative staff and managers and wages, taxes, benefits and so on. At 6.9, these are big zero for us. I don't know. I don't know many business lines itself. It just don't happen. If you've got a business, you've got to do something with it. You've got to spend some time in it, you know what I mean? We do it. We have to do it ours. And so I feel like we have to attribute at least half of whatever. I'd rather don't have to hire somebody, don't mean I don't have to do something. He's just a traditional contractor. I'm going to assume that it's something like maybe First Student. It's a big contractor and there's a conglomerate owns it. And obviously, they don't go manage their own business. They hire somebody to run their business. We manage our own business. And it attributes to something. So I attribute it in fact, it should be at least 36, somewhere in there. Should be something. You can't, if you own a business, you can't do, you can't just do all of it. Runs itself. Don't happen that way. If it does, you probably won't hurt too well. I also noticed the things here, he makes some comparisons here. Maintenance, labor, fuel, vehicle maintenance. He attributed 5 to 6 percent to his traditional contractors. And also, he attributed that to Ava. Fuel, he attributed 5 to 70 percent and also, the same to Ava. Vehicle maintenance, and I'm assuming he's talking about parts in this particular case are out of services required, other than perhaps, you know, in your own shop or in the house. I don't really know what that is other than parts. But he attributes 5 to 6 percent. But I had a couple of things I said we've over. If I find these pages, these, I should have, should have put numbers on them. I did, did. What I noticed here in his conclusions here, he said it would, talking about newer buses, sorry. He said it would decrease maintenance costs if we had newer buses. And so that's his conclusion. I'm just using his conclusion. And also, if we go on over again to the page 10, we would, we would find that again, he said that our run times are 25 percent longer. I don't believe you can run a bus 25 percent longer without using more fuel. I don't believe you can run a bus 25 percent longer not wearing 40 tires. I don't believe you can run a bus 25 percent longer and not wear all the other parts on the bus. Probably recording on English. So I attributed a little more for each one of them because what makes sense to me, I have common sense, I don't know very much else. I went to 67 on that, 68 on the other. Which is a very conservative number, I believe. And a lot of 25 percent, okay? Bleak depreciation. Do they have older buses? I'll tell you, even older buses, they depreciate. They do not. You can't say they do not depreciate. It just doesn't happen. Better be careful on the long end of the last. And I stress maintenance. I'm 47 years old, I'm a mechanic. That's what I do. It's one of the reasons I do what I do, because I'm able to do that. I have the ability to do it. I know what to do. And that's important. If you're going to weed anything out of this, we're going to have price. So if you're going to get anything out of it, you better learn how to do that. Get as good as you want, pretty quick. So I believe there has to be a lot, we'll go half and half on that though. I believe that's fair enough, what I see. The risk in insurance is, I don't want to go ahead and trouble with that. We're not asking, we realize that the other training and whatever, what I stick to. What I notice though is when I, he adds up all these numbers. And if you add those numbers up, say Ava's 40 on the 40 percent side, now if you ever come 64 percent. If you will add up the 37 side, and hopefully it'll come with 56 percent. If you go over and add the 40 on the traditional contractors all the way down, it'll come to 90 percent. If you go up to the 37 side and go down it, it won't come to 85 percent. It'll come to 74 percent. Now, if you come down there, and you put that 66 percent, that's what this is going to be. Put it underneath that number, here's the difference you get, 8 to 11 percent. Not 20, it's 25 percent. I believe that's, I think there's anything out of line with that. In my experience, I'm 37 years, 38 years driving a bus. This is my 39 year to operate a bus. I know something about it from everything. I know something about it. And so I feel that's, he's probably off quite a bit on this. There's a lot of difference between 10, 20, 25 percent and 8 percent. I believe that's fair. That's, just like sure that those thoughts with you, that's our view, all right? That's our view of what we're seeing here on, in this report. That's what we want to share with you. So we feel like that's a, that is a reasonable, a reasonable comparison. Or reasonable comparison certainly. You know, those numbers ahead and nothing else. It would seem quite unreasonable to me. So we did have some comparisons here in this diagram. Of course, he has the nearest comparison, I guess, we have. One of them is 12 percent more than what Ava is. The next one is 30 percent more than what Ava's average is currently. True, we're involved with this, there's not going to be a lot of loss. We have, we have a lot, plus we have 25 percent longer runtime. And I noticed, something I picked up on, I didn't, I didn't take notes in this. We had a telephone conference. He showed some graphs. I didn't record anything from those. I have no information about them. I noticed that when he got down to this portion that we see here, I have underlined, says, SBC concludes that Ava, that Ava contractor service rates are reasonable compared to other districts in the area. The thing I noted about that is when he got down there, in his telephone communication with him, he actually said, we was entitled to 9 to 11 percent increase. But I find it's not in print. Something changed in his mind about that. I'm not sure what it was. That just something, I noted, it was 9 to 11, but now it's disappeared. And it's not there anymore. So something that I took note of, which definitely changed. Here we got down to the end, here where we come to the 40 percent, or the 25 percent longer runtime. Obviously, there was an error in this computation whenever he, when he first made the report. Made an error, I believe he acknowledged that error. But he still seems to have a little trouble understanding what he says. And I don't know why, he ran it twice, it took me pretty easy to read. I don't know a comment on why he can't read it. But he said the average cost per day of Ava route, this is talking about the contracted routes, $200. That's the average a day, per day. A typical contracted cost attributed to driving wages is 37 percent of the daily cost, or $74. Now, to account for longer runtime, the recommended route is $218.50. That's how I understand it, $200 to $218.50. That's the recommended route, that's his recommendation. And he goes on to empirically say here, to show how he's, I used to come to that point, he said 25 percent or $74 is $18.50 in additional rider compensation. For a total of $92.50 for the driving wages. This recommended route reflects 9.25 percent increase in cost per day for Ava routes from, in his parenthesis, $200 to $218.50. Now, why he can't understand that, I don't know. He seemed to be having difficulty. Because the point of it, of course, is, this is first, one is an error, of course, and his, and all the numbers on it. But what I did was I took $18.50 times 18 routes, times 160 days. I get $55,944. That's $18.50 route, right? Per day. Hard to understand. I took these, I had these numbers here. I believe you ever once supplied the numbers to me. Showing total mileage.
Wait, I missed it.
I was in your, in your office, we discussed.
For last year.
Right. I believe this, you hear, here's the numbers. I used those numbers. And I took and times the rate at that time, at that time was 265 and 188. Then I added the two numbers together. And so that gives us the amount of money that was, that's paid without any fuel surcharge. Just the amount of money in the contract. It's $386,639.91. Now, in order to have given this $55,944 that he recommended, it would require, on mileage sees, what he said here is 200 dollars from 200 dollars to 218 dollars. The 200 dollars amounts to dirt, paved, base. I believe you asked me, what should we attribute this increase to? I said, I think it ought to be on mileage, because we're talking about longer drive time. It should be on mileage, okay? And so if we attribute it to mileage, 9.25 is not going to work. You can't get there. I think one example I gave, but here's, $18.50 is Kansas City. If you want to get there, you can take off at 9.25, you're going to get about 100 miles and it's going to be done. If you're going to get all the way there, you're going to have to use the proper number. And the proper number is 14.4692. Will take you to $55,943.70. And then say 30 cents. I'm not interested in those things, of course. We just, I just went that far, so I'll write that up there. And so that's what we was trying to, trying to show. That's what it computes to. That's what, that's what the, what the recommendation is. He stated it twice here, it's not a reason, but for some reason, he keeps trying to tell us that 9.25 is what the rate is. Well, I guess we have some math teachers over here. Be sure to tell us if this is done correctly. All right. I don't know. But I'm pretty simple minded, but I believe that's, that's my numbers. So I believe that's what we feel is, is what the correct number is, all right? And so we wanted to share what, our idea of what this, what this, this report shows, all right? We want to share that point with you. No, this is just a note here that brings it, tells us that Mr. Giovanni understands that there was indeed a error, okay? And it was, it was inaccurate, calculated, it was a mistake. It was wrong. And we just bring that, bring that to your attention. Because I understood from the June meeting, when we had the June meeting, we talked about this. I understood that from what I, the vote of the board was that your intention was to follow, follow the recommendation. And so I felt like that we paid $2,500, just like he paid $2,500. I appreciate your time and we wanted to, to share our thoughts on what this report consists of, what it talks, what it shows, what it tells us. Tells us that we're working half price and we're a little, even close comparative. I don't know why he did comparison with, wanted this comparative, I wish he would, but he did not. He chose traditional contractors to compare us with. I think like it would have been more accurate, more accurate comparison if we were comparing. Because I can't imagine, I see that he, he seems to stress new buses. Average of eight years old. If, if you use an eight-year-old bus, and buses vary in amount of distance that they travel. Some longer routes here is going to travel more than some of the shorter routes. My route happens to be a very short route. It's not very long. But if I had a bus and I used it for eight years, I'd barely have $100,000 on it. Equipment that we have today is probably, is far better than the equipment we had 20, 30 years ago when I started, all right? Some, we got buses with diesel engines, properly cared for, it's good for $300,000. We got friends under an enormous weight with 10,000 pound rate packages. Blackberry is, is 17,500 pound package. The same ones that you'll see on delivery trucks running out here on the roads. Have no problem doing 500,000 miles. I realize that we, particularly in our area, travel over very rough roads. Probably a little hard on the bodies, but there's no reason to assume that a bus will go 300,000 miles. Properly cared for, with proper maintenance. I see no reason why it couldn't. My experience tells me that it will. Matter of fact, I drive one, 320,000 miles on it. I've had that bus for a long time. In all the years I've had it, I've missed three trips with it. And I took it down and put a clutch in it, and I had a spare bus at the time, so I wasn't in any hurry, and I took three days to put a clutch in it. Health wise, it's made every trip, every night, every morning, for years on end. Has 30,000, 20,000 miles on it. Does exactly what it needs to do. Doesn't do any more, doesn't do any less. And I think school districts waste a lot of money on school buses that they just buy isolated, fancy school buses sitting up beside the building. Well, the option, object is simply the transport students turn from school to safety. And meets all the safety standards, does everything anybody else's bus does. And I have no trouble with it. But I maintain it and I pay attention to what it says. I can't tell you that it'll start in the mornings. No bus, I think, maybe a spare bus in the morning. That's life, you know? If you drive a bus, it's going to happen to you. That's happened to me, but it hasn't happened to me with this bus, all right? And so I feel like there's a lot, a lot of money wasted and they put too much emphasis on, on a new bus. I believe y'all have this little bus. Matter of fact, my bus never passed, never failed an inspection in all the years I've had it until last year, and they turned me down for a tire off end. I can go home and get it now and tell you, you look after yourself, ain't nothing wrong. I told the man then, ain't nothing wrong. But he, he wrote it on the paper, so I have to change it. $100 bill. And a couple hours' work. Nevertheless, maintenance is important. Maintain the bus, you don't have a problem. See the chug over, you better slow down. If you don't, it's going to break the springs, you're going to have some problems. And so I think it's a lot of wasted money before it's at those. So we wanted to share this, these, well, she did have some other comments to make here. And he recommends a lot of things, I see his recommendation there. But I find that recommendation that here was actually, actually given 30 days after his final report. And using information from Jim Board meeting, we just, we don't think he's there. Actable, it shouldn't look like. Feel like he's, might be a very biased, very biased thing to use that. Recognize that, that information, because it shouldn't be there. So if we feel like it, we should, we felt like we should. And hope we have the opportunity to share our thoughts about what this, what we paid this money for. And also, what I wanted to share with you. And I appreciate, appreciate your time and concern. And I will maybe help you. And you're the decision, you're the deciding folks. We're not the deciding folks, you're the second. And we just want to share our thoughts on it, all right? We appreciate that. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not unless they have any questions, not anything.
What is it you're asking for, Larry?
What are we asking for?
I mean, just put it out there.
What are you putting? I'll be honest with you, what we asked for was 6 percent to begin with. And we, the reason why we asked for that was because, once I shared some information on blue sheet on the 20th meeting, and it showed the difference in the mileage increases from, in a certain period of time. And I think the increase over that period of time was about 10 percent where other people connected to the school was about 29 percent or 30 percent. I don't remember exactly the number, I've got it written down someplace. And we asked for 6, to try to help us catch back at, because we've been falling behind, falling behind, falling behind for years. 20 years ago, a board member came to me and another driver at the time, or he was visiting with him. He said, you know, you fellows are going behind. You're behind where you used to be. And it's continued to fall behind. And it's hard to, it's hard to wean any profits out of this. If, with your permission, I'll use some information that you had at the June meeting. I'll reference it at least, because you talked about six drivers. And I don't bore you with all that, with all that, the numbers. I think, what I've done is I took an average, average of those, and I assumed that's taxable income that was in him. I always said, those six drivers that averaged, and they come out to $10,600, I believe, that's the average, for six drivers. And I noticed that there was one route that was in the twenties, which means it's a shorter route. There was three that was in the thirties, which means they were somewhere in the middle. There was two that was in the forties, which means there were the longer routes. And so it was a fairly average representation of drivers and route lengths. And the taxable income on the average for those six routes was $10,600 percent. That's not, that's not a lot of money, you gotta keep a lot of profit every morning. And part of the whole bus, try to keep it running, and we share it from a power outlet and various things like that.
So are you, are you asking, Larry, are you asking the board to raise you to your 6 percent? Are you asking us to go to the 9.25 percent that you showed us on here? What are you asking us?
I'm not really asking for anything. I'm going on the assumption from what I heard at the June 20 meeting, that they was interested in following the recommendation of this, of this certain. And from the information that was on it at that time was 4.62 percent, which is an error of the correct amount. Really, is what I showed you was 14.62. And we're asking the board to make a decision on, on those bases. You know, not asking for a particular dollar figure or percentage figure. The figure for this report, for all of its beyond mileage, is 14.46, all right? That is what the recommendation is. That's what we wanted to point out. What the recommendation is, all right? Would we like to support you? You betcha. I would, I can, maybe I, I would not apologize to you, but, all right. I wouldn't mind having one. I would buy a new one, I can afford that. If you, if you start moving the buses, you find out, just find a eight-year-old bus, it'll cost you $35,000. When you got a $25,000 contract, it's a little tough to buy a $35,000 bus. I don't know if you understand that or not. And you're still going to buy cars and oil change. I do it myself, I could ever do it. Still buy, change the oil on my bus costs me $100.
Oh, yeah.
$100 bill is to change oil, all right? And I change oil regularly, that's why I'm not sure of that. But I think it's important to save money.
What's interesting is that most of the research that I've done, your older buses actually are better for our type roads because the newer buses have so many computers on them that the jarring from the roads makes it worse. I mean, those buses end up, in a lot of cases, in the shop a lot of times versus the older buses that don't have like computer crap on them. So I, I mean, that's, I, I think that, you know, that their comment about, you know, it'd be nice to have the newer buses. The roads that you all go on, I would think the older buses could withstand it better than the new ones look all but computers.
You're right.
Is that correct or not?
That is correct. Matter of fact, that was one of the comments, we had a meeting, with Mr. Jeff Woods from the State Highway DOT, and he gave us some instruction, helped us better understand their, their procedures and whatever. And that's one of the comments that he shared with us. He said, I see more newer buses that have computers down than I do the older buses. Because I don't got no bus.
That's what I've looked into, yeah.
Y'all better quit running down the road.
Versus the computers that shut the baby down.
If you got a computer, you don't worry. The starter be fail, I can roll it, I can roll it, I can start it. It'll run, it's no taking 50 minutes to go. So I don't, I don't have to have those, I have to have them up top way bikes, that's all I got to have. I think we just had one the other day, the alternator failed, and some gear operated on it. And it's beside the road. And that light gas is, it is better. Sometimes in all the buses, take the vibration and the bed, that's where you're at. A lot of computer, a lot of computer, there's around like five, five volts. And some resistances. We're talking about five volts and resistances, and that's pretty crazy. And if you start subjecting that to the kind of roads that we, by the way, the roads are improved. This is typically, on this.
Oh, they have improved over there.
The road things are, you're improved, I appreciate it. Nevertheless, we still have this, we still have those roads that, and they're sort of ragged one of these days, maybe, and we'll wash those roads again. But nevertheless, yes, in that light, newer buses sometimes are detrimental and maybe available, make a trip. Where, on the buses, we call this, we call this, right? Okay, is there, was there any other question?
On that subject though, I asked a few of you after, I think it was that June board meeting, if I can remember correctly, did they, do you want newer buses? Goes on to your, your comment, and no, you don't think we need newer buses. And I realize that a newer bus, I mean, from what we've been spending, like on the trip bus, they're, they're very expensive. And then I've also seen some of the used buses, older buses for sale, and I see that there is a huge amount of depreciation. So even with using these newer buses, you, you understand there's a lot less depreciation in yours, even though there, there is still some, I get that. There's a lot less depreciation, what I've seen in these older buses versus these newer buses.
If you're buying an old bus, when I bought my bus, it's 10 years old. When I bought the one, that is nine years old. But I maintain my buses nine years as long as I can. On previous to that, I used it 12 years.
And that 8 to 11 percent on the depreciation, would you say that is an accurate amount that they, that these comparable contractors or traditional contractors would spend that haven't, that, that our contractors don't have?
I have to accept his numbers because I have no way to dispute his numbers.
Yeah, I see, I'm just going by his number.
I have to accept his numbers, I don't have any way to dispute his numbers.
And I, I can see if, if we were to require newer buses, that, yeah, we would need to.
Well, that's one of the things, I really feel like this, the state already has requirements for buses. They take care of that for you. There's no reason for a school board to worry about a bus, because the states would take care of that anyway. They already got regulations, state regulations, they, they manage that. I bought buses, like a buy a used car. I'm telling you what, if you're going to buy a used car, you don't buy a used car when you need it. Buy a used car when you find it. If you go out and look for buses, and I've spent some time doing that, you'll look a while for where you find one you want. Because they come out of these school districts, they hire these drivers and they don't know. All they know is go to find the key and enough knowledge to get past the test. They don't know, they don't know what I know. I forgot more on my Ava here, and they under will know. I forgot more on my way over here, may under will know about, about bus, all right? And so I use that knowledge to maintain my bus, and I probably share that with everybody that, they ask me, I'll share it, I, I want them to know, because I want their bus to run too. And they need, they need their bus to run, and we need to lean out every, every penny we can get, we're way down the hole, we got it. You can't lean out money out of, 30 years since anybody's put a tar on my bus but me. I'm not my own tar, so I do everything for my bus. Only thing that does, I do not do, is what I cannot physically do in my shop, which I just, yeah, three, four years ago, built a new shop at my house, $27,000 to have a place to work on my bus. So if it's cold, I drive inside and we shut the door and it's warm, I can service my bus, and that's necessary. I got no bus, I want the thing to go as far as it can, all right? And if I buy a new bus, I want it to do the same thing, I want that thing to go, I don't want it to break down, I want it to be able to fix it when I need to. Uh, that's, that's, that's what you have to do to lean out what you can at the prices we're working at, all right? It's necessary, you gotta do it. All these other fellows have to do the same thing. And, uh, some of them have shops, just like I've spent their money on shops too, but they gotta have a shop, they got a place to put it, you're gonna have to have someplace that you can repair it, because, uh, it needs to be repaired. And once repaired properly, maintained properly, uh, that's, they're safe, state takes care of all the requirements. When you come up here to the state inspection, they're gonna be, I'm six guys, crawl over that thing, they're gonna look. And they look close, and obviously, when you got older buses, they're gonna find, well, you're wrong, you're gonna have to do something or something. We find very little major items, very little major items. That's, that's a problem, that some of these things will pop up, you got a buzzer that don't work. Uh, these are fragile little things, panels and buzzers and switches, they can fail at any moment, you never know, a light can fail, whatever, but we had no major problems. We had, we had a very good record of service, we don't have, and we don't have many buses down. We're pretty good maintaining our buses now. And that's because these fellows out here do the same thing I do, they have to. If they don't, can't make it, can't catch them up, well, you can't take down the shop. And you take a bus into Springfield, it costs $125 an hour, it'll take you very long. Mr. McFarland can tell us that, he runs a computer problem, he can solve it. All right? That's, that's the way it is.
All right, just one other question towards the beginning of your presentation, you talked about how the, um, the difference in the, the pay, um, for ours was $687,000 and some change.
Right.
And it is, uh, it's actually to the, uh, what, 18 route owners.
Right.
$615,946, whenever you take away the, the handicap bus, correct?
Right, right.
And, and the comparisons, do we know if, if similar things were taken out of theirs or were added into it to make it, to compare apples to apples in that situation? You know, because you said whenever you compare.
So you're talking about the 59, 148?
59, 148.
That's the average?
Yeah. Yes, I think so.
Again, I always rely on his number.
Okay, so that's one thing we don't know. As far as taking that out, I understand that some of that, that, that money was for that handicap bus, which was a pretty significant amount for one route. Um, but we don't know if that was for the traditional operating expenses.
I don't know.
Mark.
Yeah.
Person else that's in that report, and I believe it's on that same page, is he used $1,233 as our base, and that is not our base. Our base is $1,223.58. So he used a higher base than what we are actually receiving.
Okay.
To figure in his number.
Do we know what page that's on?
Um, yeah, hang on, just a second. That's on page eight. If you look down there, the contract cost, down there in parentheses, in that first paragraph, about halfway down, it says $1,233 monthly per base.
Page eight of the transcript?
Page eight, yeah.
Next to the last paragraph, right?
Okay.
Big parentheses.
Nelson, please, this page, please, my page eight, so it's gonna be a different, a different version.
I see.
Right.
Just page.
Page nine on the, what's this?
Oh, you're on the first report.
I have, well, I have all three of them.
Okay.
But that's the one I have in my hand.
So 12,000, 1,232.
You used the third report?
Huh?
Did you, which report did you go off? Because I have three of them.
The original one.
Yeah.
It's the same one.
Also in this, the, in the transpar report, it talks about the, the 4.62, which is what was approved on the mileage. And, and you're saying that actually what the recommendation should have been is 14.
If you put it all on mileage, if you put it on the whole sum, all of it's 9.25, that number is correct, for the whole sum. But if you're only gonna put it on mileage, then you obviously have to up that percentage because, uh, to come up with that $55,000, 1446, what $18.02 would be, times 18 routes for others three days, the number he's talking about is different here, okay?
But I'd like to say that there is, you know, with the other, let's just say with the 9.25 on the mileage, that, that was half of that was given, 4.62. And the other half is recommended, is the recommendation, uh, on the, what is it, the third draft of this report? The final draft that we've gotten, or final recommendation goes with some, some other stipulations on the route owner's part, right?
He does, but that's why we won't recognize it, because he drives that information from the June meeting, well, that was 30 days after he had, after his report was completed.
But we also had board members calling and talking to, we also had board members calling, to stand, calling the county, talking to them. And I, you know, I would've thought everyone would've stayed out of it, let him do the report, not to compromise the integrity of the report.
I like the answer to that. I like the answer.
I mean, okay.
After the June 20th board meeting, I went home, sat down in bed, and I thought, how much did these guys get for those raises? And, I mean, it was too heavy on my part. I, I called it immediately, I don't know why, I didn't sit before. The board's got the way, I couldn't see the truth. The report was wrong.
We've ordered on it?
Incorrect information. Every study, every one of the reports that came out was $18.50. $18.50, $18.50, he showed it there. There, it's undeniable that his intent was to show an increase of $18.50, okay? The school paid 2,500, they paid 2,500. I called the guy up the following Friday, left a message, he called me back Monday, and I said, "I just want you to do one thing, your calculations are incorrect. I need you to change the last sentence on the last page of the report to show correct calculations." Which he made an attempt to do, but they're still wrong. He went 9.25% on dirt and highway, which is just what he said a minute ago, maybe he didn't make it clear enough, that if you include base, then you can use 9.25% across board, $18.50, easy figure, you can calculate that in 30 seconds. The number that he's using on mileage, if not totally correct, is pretty darn close. And you've got a sheet somewhere in this stuff, Dr. Dialley, that shows that. So I wrote an email, and I sent a copy to Dr. Dial, and I sent a copy to Gina, the bus driver secretary. And it stated that, basically, I felt like the reputation, credibility of transpar was damaged, that, uh, clearly the 1040s show $18.50 per route, calculations that transpar is using by adding nine and a quarter, dirt highways incorrect, in order for 9.25 to work, the base would have to be added, correct percentage using mileage is across, it's 14.46%. Now, that is correct. His answer to me was basically that I was still wrong. Now, I don't care how you look at it, I can sit down here and show anybody, it's an exact mathematic calculation with an exact answer. You can dispute the $18.50 and the 14.46. I mean, you could dispute it, but...
I think where the, where the, there's obviously a discrepancy in the math, in where it is. I mean, if you do that, I see, I see what you're saying. But you're saying you believe in the $18.50 recommendation, but not the specific dollar amount recommendation that they did.
No, because his calculations were wrong, I mean...
But what if you do, what if you take the, the specific, we, we believe that, that, because they spelled it out specifically what that, uh, raise should be, to the penny, that that was what he meant? And then it still is that way, except it adds the other 4.62% recommendation to be added. Uh, based on service quality remaining high, highway patrol inspections, district finances, reopening negotiations of the contract between driver association and the district that could address following topics such as standard yearly increase of contractors, perpetuity clause, sharing of overhead costs, and things like that. In the event that the contract negotiations are agreed by both parties, SBC would be pleased to provide at no additional charge a review of the current contract for service, recommend a better position each party, recommendation to better positions each party in contract negotiations. So, so, I mean, he, they do put that specifically in there.
Okay, first report didn't have none of that in there.
Right.
I didn't ask him to rewrite the report, I asked him to correct his calculations. That's all I asked for.
And he just, he just added, added a paragraph to the recommendation in what I...
Totally, yeah. Every time...
He didn't rewrite the report, he added one paragraph to the recommendation, correct?
Yes. And, yeah. When did he, when did you talk to him, Dr. Dial? He called me and told me that he was gonna send a letter to report, and that was about me. After you talked to him, I was sitting in bed, it would've been after you called him, sort of been the following week. So the only two people to talk to were you and I, as far as I'm, and I definitely didn't ask for him to edit a paragraph to the report. So he had all of this info, he had all of this information when he came, he got copies of the contracts, yeah, and I drove him around, they met with him. So we met with him on, on separate occasions, together and separately, more than... He didn't put it in the first report, and he had all that information.
That recommendation wasn't there, but if I remember from the first report, and I did not bring the first report with me, uh, if I remember, it was all in that report, if you read it on the lower overhead, not, not the, in the, not in the recommendation paragraph actually, but in the actual report, it was in there on how, um, our contracts differed, and there was lower overhead costs, and there were some things in, in our contract that were lower, such as the, the, the age of the buses, that's, that's a, um, I understand why you want to drive the older buses, why it can't even benefit you, and part of that is, 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 uh, it is cheaper for you to run those as well.
We're at half price, we have to. When you're at half price, what average is, traditional contractors are, at the average of 18, eight-year-old buses, but that's $59,000 a year.
But you also said you don't want to drive newer buses, but because if we got...
Oh, I didn't say that, I said, it's beneficial to have an older bus that you can use for backup. Would I buy a newer bus? Sure, I'd buy a newer bus, why wouldn't I? If I had the money, but I don't have the money.
Right, so if, so if we give additional raises, then we, we could also add, that's what the, some of the recommendations were on this report, was to, you know, make it, uh, say, an eight-year-old average age of a bus. That's what other traditional contractors do.
How many taxpayer dollars do you want to spend to look at? Because that's what we're talking about, is buying newer buses and looking at...
Well, I agree, I agree with that, but I mean, you're wanting this, you're wanting to spend the, the same money to, to, just to, to pay drivers, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I don't want to give, but, but what, you're just wanting to give a raise, but, and we did that, we gave a raise this year, we've already voted on a 4.62 on, on the mileage total.
Which was 3%.
Yep, roughly 3% total.
Actually, 3.4, if you wanna figure it out, find it, what I understand.
No, I, I, what I understood was roughly a 3% raise total, which also was more of a raise than what we gave them, the average teacher, etc.
It was actually 3.08, sorry.
3.08% based on Excel, Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. Okay, let me tell you, if you give them the raise, and I'm talking about a 14.46% with $9, or 9.25%, $18.50 a day, it comes out to like .004% of our expected revenue. And I, the expected revenue, the number I used was 13.2 million.
Total operating budget.
Just ballpark numbers.
If you give them the 9.25, I'm sorry to have to interrupt, but I already calculated this, if you give them the 9.25, the extra above the 4.62 that we've already given them, the cost to the district is $16,956.92. Am I correct? Thank you. That would be what the increase would be to the district to put them at 9.25%.
Well, correct.
I just wanted to put a number out there, so I'm a numbers person.
My number's correct.
Total.
9.25 is across the board, base and mileage.
Mm-hmm. If you put it up to the 9.25.
That's spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, it's the one you gave, yeah. And, uh, we already gave them 4.62, so if you increase them to the 9.25, the cost to the district is $16,956.92. Thanks for agreeing.
Which, which is about 1,400 of the schools, but their expected revenue is 13.2 million.
And we know they have missed raises. How many years? Two? Is it two?
One that, one since I've been here.
Okay, is it, is it two?
It's 2% for years, yeah, I can...
Okay, okay.
They just got 3% fishing.
I tracked that back and gave it to you. I'm not counting this yet.
I don't have to.
Okay. I, before, you...
I tracked that back to '05, and I gave it to you, I didn't break one.
We, we all agree, they agree, we agree, the transpar report has really been...
There's so...
What's the right word I'm looking for?
A waste.
Discredited?
Thank you, that's the word I'm looking for.
Maybe because it's gonna change so many times.
It's been changed, right. But the bottom line is, every time, the numbers pretty much are the same, okay? Like Dan said, the 18.50, that's there every time, okay? That it should be increased this amount, you know, the difference, a lot of it has stayed the same, okay? So you have to give credit to the fact that part of it, yes, our bus drivers, they're telling us, they have longer routes, okay? He's telling us 20% underpaid, okay? He's, I mean, he's telling you, bless you, he's telling us all these things in this report. Now, I'm looking at the first one, I'm not even looking at whatever the, the others are, I'm looking at the very first report, that they paid for and we paid for, okay?
So that's what you believe we should go by?
I think we should give them, this, I'm not making a motion or anything, this is my opinion, Dina, that's it. I think they should go to the 9.25%. We're talking $16,000, and I'm not saying that's, you know, a, a huge amount of money, it's a, it's a lot of money, but it's not a huge amount of money, okay? I believe part of that should be considered, we've settled the problem, okay? And I've said this numerous times, the, in some cases, goodwill, respect for what they do is worth something. They take care of our kids, they make sure they're there, okay? They have a hard job, I watch them go by my house, because I get up at 5:00 in the morning, I watch them go by my house all the time, and I'm thinking, "Oh, my God." I'm, I'm not the only idiot up to this time of day. Okay, so I think $16,956.92 to put this, this issue to rest that has been going on for years and years is a small price in my book, and that's my opinion. It's been going on too long, gentlemen.
We've had, we continue to have problems with mileages. Come on, I'm seriously, we really have.
Mike, the mileage has been, but the mileage has been corrected this year. Don't bring, don't, don't do it.
No, I'm just saying, every year I've been on the board, we have nobody correct it, so we can fix that.
Okay, Ben?
Can I say something to that? Dr. Dial and Mr. Dial ran every one of our routes before school started.
We did that every...
Tracked all of our mileage. So all of our mileage this year... So, all of our mileage this year is the mileage that it is because we sat in a vehicle and ran every bit of our routes with them. And Mr. Dalton can tell you, I told him, every place I stopped and the kids that I picked up, all the way around my entire route. I don't know if that happened with everybody, but when I sat in the vehicle with him, I told him, I stop here, this is who I pick up. I stop here, this is who I pick up. And we drove the entire route.
Isn't that problem kind of academic? Aren't we going to do GPS to track some miles?
That, I mean, that's a conversation we're gonna have.
Okay, so, that problem, maybe that problem solved too, Michael. I mean, maybe...
That's all messed.
And, you know, and if that's problem solved, okay, maybe instead of every two years you check the mileage, you check it every year. I don't believe these, these gentlemen and ladies would have an issue with that. Would you? If you did that the first of the year, like you did this year, every year? I know you, you want me to go with you, I'll keep your company. It's okay. We'll play Elvis, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep coming. But what I'm saying is, would that solve the problem? If we knew the mileage every year?
Let me explain the GPS.
Okay. Oh, I'm fine with it. I'll shut it off.
Then, no, then I'm gonna be fine, just, I think that is... So, the GP, so, we currently have GPS. Some of you have seen it because we've looked at it for whatever reason. But it doesn't track mileage. It shows the route that you take, but it doesn't track mileage. They have a newer version of that, that, and, and this one checks in every two minutes. The newer version checks in every ten seconds, correct, Mr. Dalton?
Correct.
And then there, and there is a way to check the mileage on it. We have to convert it to a, like a file, but we can't check the lines on it. Just, it, it is, they have to come into your bus and they have to upgrade the radio software. They, the current same radio, they would have to up, they would have to upgrade the software on the bus.
See, so, see, there, that would solve that problem. And I, that, I know that's been Michael's problem for a long time.
Fourteen thousand last year.
For a long, I know, I know. Okay, so, I think we're in a path to solve that issue. I believe now's the time to solve this. I really...
Hang on. What'd you say? What did he say?
He didn't say anything.
I said fourteen thousand.
Okay, fourteen thousand, that's it.
So...
Pardon?
So, now I'm asking, I'm asking the question, Dr. Dalton said it required. So, I'm asking the question to all the bus drivers that are sitting here. If the board would vote for that, for the nine point two five across the board, would that be good with everyone?
Base, dirt, and pay?
Yes. Yeah.
That's not that number.
Is this just mileage?
It's all on the mileage.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's nine point two five on the mileage.
That's what the number you're operating off of is.
Is that just mileage? Okay, I'm sorry, just mileage.
I didn't really understand, you're talking about doing nine point two five on highway, dirt, and base, correct?
No, I was wrong. It's highway and dirt. I apologize, it's my fault. I misunderstood. But that's still better than six percent, and it's better than your four point six two. It would be double your four point six two.
We don't have a floor here, we, we...
No, no, that's fine. I, I, and I don't want you to vote. I, I'm saying, I want you all to talk about it, we're not gonna vote about it either. So, but, we would like, I would like you to think about it. I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but I would like you to think about it. And I apologize about the base thing.
So, I'm still not clear on it. You're saying...
You look at this number three, look at number three.
Okay. That's not what the Transpar report says, that's...
I know what the Transpar report said, fourteen point four six, I get that, Dan, okay? But, and I'm not saying that maybe that's not what they deserve, okay? I'm saying nine point two five is, I'm sure, doable with the school. Dr. Dial, I mean, I know you'd have to dig deep in the pockets, but could we do it? Okay, so, they have gotten a double increase, okay? Better than the six percent that they proposed to begin with. We're gonna get nine point two five, all right? And it maybe won't kill the school.
And you guys are okay with that?
No, they are not voting, they're just...
Well, I realize that, generally, I realize you're not taking a vote.
I will speak, but we have, we have...
No, they, they have their own procedures, just like we do. But, I'm just throwing that out there, okay? The mileage problem, I believe, is solved, and that's been some, some people on board's problem. And that's not to say that next year, we don't give them another increase, okay? But, I'm saying for this year, that I think we need to think about that, to the nine point two five. The Transpar report is, you know, kind of thrown to the side in a way.
So, the Transpar, so you say the Transpar report...
No, I'm saying, you want to, I don't see us being able to afford to give them fourteen point four six percent.
Okay, I'm just saying, you just said that...
Am I correct, Dr. Dalton? That would be really bad, right? I'm, I'm asking you a question.
Make you twitch.
And make you twitch. But nine point two five, we're giving a little.
Do you not think that we, that we gave a little, we gave them a...
I don't think we gave them enough.
Three point eight percent.
You know what I think? I think had we given them their six percent that they asked for to begin with, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. Okay, that's what I think.
We might not be, but we give teachers two point two percent. I mean, we gotta bring this up here, and do you think that we should be paying, do you, do you think we should be paying drivers more than teachers?
No, of course not, and I'm not saying it pays the drivers...
The hourly rate on the figure that we were given was that, that after operating cost is, it, the drivers are making thirty-two point two two...
After operating costs, most of them are making ten thousand dollars.
This says thirty-two dollars an hour versus a teacher with a master's gets thirty dollars an hour, and I just, that's, that's...
But that thirty-two dollars an hour is not after cost. There is no way. There is no way that's after cost.
Can I, okay. I, I don't... I tried to get the teacher pay thing, not talk about it before we started. I texted Dr. Dial last night and asked him, let's not go there. If you wanna go there, fine. But if you're gonna talk about teacher pay, I guess, and stuff, I'd like to say. First of all, let's go back to where this teacher started, okay? And I, I'll get there, okay? This teacher started, maybe graduated from high school, or maybe she was thirty years old or he, and they had two or three kids in the house, whatever, I don't know. Four years of college, probably a couple more to finish the masters. Twenty thousand dollars, thirty, forty?
It's over you go.
And thousands of hours getting their education. So, when you look at teacher pay, look at what they put in it to get to where they're at. When, when, they take away from their family, they take away from their everything. So, when that teacher gets out of college, and she starts as a first-year teacher in Ava, she makes thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year. You take away her teacher retirement, that leaves five hundred and twenty-three dollars a week. Still gotta pay state and federal taxes and insurance. What's she got left, okay? So, now let's go up to the ten-year teacher, the Dr. Dial at Senior Fulvers. Ten-year teacher's making forty thousand five hundred dollars. When the teacher got the raise, if she, from the ten-year to the eleven-year, when she gets her step, which is what we gave them this year, she gets six hundred and seventy-three dollars for a raise. Took her ten years, built thirty-one thousand, forty-one thousand. Okay, if that same teacher was teaching in Springfield, she'd make almost fifty-two thousand. Pulled it up and looked it up myself, that's eleven thousand three hundred dollars more than what we pay. That same teacher in Springfield went from a ten-year teacher to an eleven-year teacher, got eighteen hundred and fifty-five dollars for a raise, just a step. We gave six hundred. Not only that, teacher retirement, this twenty-year teacher teaching in Springfield would make eight hun, eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars more every year in retirement, twenty years. That's a lot of money, I don't care how you look at it. So, teacher pay's pretty typical.
Here in Ava, you mean?
Yeah. Basically, almost anywhere, but, yeah, here, it's pretty bad. So, I don't disagree with that. I mean, if we did a Transpar study, it'd say teachers need twenty percent minimum. So, I don't, I don't have assholes talking about that. But, what I would like is the next time, when I walk in a boardroom or any kind of meeting, I would like to talk about giving teachers a raise, not just about bus drivers. And I'm not, not only that, but everything in the world is not always about money. We, we can't do without it, but the working conditions. I mean, when I, when I go in business, first thing I look at is people, their attitudes. Have, do I need to see the same person every day if I go to that same place every day? And so, the first thing I think about, well, if everybody's there every day, they must have good management, they must have good wages, and they must have good working conditions. Okay? We, in our school district, have, to me, an unusual amount of non-certified people teaching that we say we can't fill the positions for. We had a rash of people quit right at the last part of the year. So, we must be doing something wrong, okay? I would like to see not just teacher pay increased, but I would like to see some working conditions made much better than what they are. And I'm not talking about window dressing, I'm talking about meaningful change. And I'm not just talking about something that I'm gonna do. That's something we all want to do as a board and as administration. You know, we get to looking at the numbers, like I said before, you forget about the people. We can't operate a school without money, but we can't operate a school without the staff because the administration's here to kind of guide them down the road. The staff is the one that's doing the work, okay? They, they're the ones that carry on all the instructions. Without them, we're nothing. And sometimes when we're managers, we get the idea, I'm in charge, you know, I'm, I'm important. But really, we're just kind of putting them down the road. Management should be asking people, what can I do to help you do your job? And see if you can do that, and I realize sometimes you have to discipline people. But we need to do it, let's say, in a better, better way. Okay, as far as I'm concerned, the information on the... The other thing about the teacher pay, I'd like to say. It, it says on that paper, teacher works seven and a half hours a day. To me, there's so much information missing, and that'd be thirty-seven and a half hours a week. I don't know a teacher anywhere that works thirty-seven and a half hours a week, okay? Probably fifty or more, depending on the teacher and what they're teaching and where they're at. They come home, they get on the phone, because they're at school, they can't really talk to parents at school, or the parent won't call them back when they do have time to talk to them. Or they get the wrong person when they call back from the school. And they meet them in the grocery store, and they come home at night, and they get on their phone, and they talk to the parents at home, nights, weekends. Maybe they got a computer and they're doing work. All the information on there, when you go to figure wages for a teacher is incidental. I, I figure a teacher's wages at fifteen or eighteen dollars with the time you average in everything and put all the expenses in. Now, bus driver pay, thirty-two dollars an hour is ridiculous. It leaves out all the same information that I just covered with teachers. Different information, but the same information. Now, I don't feel like teacher pay had anything to do with this discussion, discussion tonight. It should not have been mentioned, okay? To me, bringing that teacher pay is a way to divide us and misleading, misleading information, or incomplete information, and, you know, it should never have been brought up. Now, I asked Dr. Dial last night to take out some of that information, and his reply was, you guys have all asked for it, and it wasn't his idea, it was somebody else's idea.
May I say why?
Pardon?
May I say why? I think that teacher information is important. Because I think whenever you deal, my opinion is whenever you talk about a school, the, the, the base of your employees are your teachers. The teachers are spending the most amount of time with our children than anybody else in our school. The teachers are, are, I, I believe, very highly trained and skilled and, and, and a lot of education goes into that. And I am not saying that drivers are not trained and skilled. I mean, Mr. Benson is a, is an auto mechanic as well and takes care of his best bus, I understand that. But I think that a lot of salaries, a lot of pay is based on what a teacher makes. And you made a good point with the Spring, saying the Springfield metro area basically of pay. And I bet if you compared total operating costs of that versus our thirteen million and some change, operating costs, we got a giant discrepancy there too, a huge difference that they're way bigger. So, obviously, there's more money to spend on things such as salary. And I wish we could pay teachers, like what you're saying, more than what we're doing. I wish we could pay bus drivers more like that. But to take one group, say, the drivers in this situation, and take them way up, and then, and then, and then give the teachers, say, the two point two this year, I think we're still gonna have a problem.
Okay. I, I wouldn't be opposed to giving the teachers, had our next board meeting, another one point seven percent raise. And I wouldn't be opposed to coming back next year and give them, give them another three percent raise. I'm pretty sure the monies are special. I'm pretty sure we can pay them. Until the economy goes bad, the state quits funding us, we can do this. Now, so, like I said, bringing, my opinion, bringing the teachers into this was meant to distract, miss the beat. And I gotta tell you, a weak leader tries to divide people so they, they can succeed. And a strong leader tries to unite people so everybody can succeed. And that's what we need, is a strong leader. So, we all need to step up. I, I was told ten thousand times, you're one guy, you can't go on board, you can't change anything. Maybe I can, but I'm sure gonna try. I've been told I couldn't do things before, but I gotta do them. Maybe I won't, but I wanna bring change. I wanna bring meaningful change and do something different. So...
I think we have a great leader, Dr. Dial. He's done a good job with our budget and our, our school, and I think he's a great leader. You know, the, the teacher, you know, I, I understand, I mean, I think teaching is the, the most underappreciated job out there, I really do.
No doubt.
I think it should be one of the highest-paid jobs, I'm passionate about that. You know, and I hate it that we can't pay for it, but we, our, our tax level is on two seventy-five, and we're doing the best we can with what we have. If we had an operating budget like the Springfield metro area places, it would be different. You know, and, and as well, I think there's something to say about our community and our quality of life here. There's a lot of professions, a lot of jobs in this area, where we can go make more money closer to Springfield, but I choose to live... But I choose to live here. We choose to live here because of, of this community, of this school. Because we choose to be here. I don't, I don't, I mean, we could all go somewhere else and make more money, but that's all relative to what's, to what's important to you.
Dr. Dial, haven't you said in the past that, I mean, I think comparing Ava to Springfield is way off the map. Okay? So haven't you said in the past, like, not growth, but those, I mean, haven't you said that we are comparable to those? Isn't that right?
So, they did, they did quite a bit this year. So we were second, third, right in there. Not all of those surveys are in yet, but we're going to be about fourth in our conference.
So we're comparable to our size districts?
Correct. I would have to wait until the rest of the survey comes in to give you that information.
I would think Springfield would be a bad comparison. I just really-
It's an hour down the road on 4th.
But you're talking about 300,000 people in a town versus 3,000 in a town, Dan.
Proportionally, it's all the same. It doesn't matter if you have 1,400 students or 140,000 students.
It does make different, okay, I have a-
And so the budget, so you're saying our operating budget should be the same as Springfield? I mean, it's not going to happen. We have the lowest tax level in the country.
Okay, I think we got off the whole thing, just like we said. I think this was about the bus drivers and not the teacher. Then I think this is a discussion for another time. I don't know how the other gentleman feels, but I believe that's a discussion for another time.
Well, as I said earlier, we can discuss it on a later time.
Yes.
But I think it's an important matter that, you know, we all have a right to how we kind of formulate our opinions and make our decision. And if we want to base it on a certain way that's not what Dan wants, that's okay.
I agree.
Because we're all, I feel like we are all intelligent on this board. And if I want to come up with a decision the way I want to come up with it, I feel like I've earned that. And I don't have to agree with Dan. And I respect him and his decision, but it doesn't mean I have to follow him.
And I didn't say you had to agree with me. I don't feel that at all.
Right.
Well, I'm sure going to sit here and voice my opinion.
Right. And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But to say that something is irrelevant to someone else's decision-making, I don't think you have a right to do that. And if I want this, I want all this information to make a decision, I, I feel like that's okay.
I, I guess-
Or Martin wants that information, or, I mean, that's for us to decide.
I, I guess the public will be the final judge.
Yeah, I agree. Sounds great.
May any of us say something? We're not the only two. And I understand, teachers are important, staff's important, food is important. Our kids come here, they have breakfast, they have lunch. Good meals are important. I have grandchildren here. They're not happy, haven't been happy with the meals. I leave that up to yous to decide. That's what you say, yous want in here, that's what's in here, instead of having our kids do it like they used to. The teachers are here to teach our students. They do have to deal with the parents. They are grateful to sit there and be able to talk to the parents about the students. The bus drivers bring our students back and forth. There's a big safety factor, driving the roads, driving in the sand, driving in the rain, driving in the road, snow. Big safety factor that nobody else has to take except that one bus driver. They're the ones who have sat there and know them parents, know them students. Most of them have sat there and took the grandparents back and forth to school. Okay? If somebody says, oh my God, I have to, and they call the bus driver, because it used to, yous sat there and paid $25 for their cell phones. Our cell phones cost us 50 bucks, but yous paid in 25. Okay? They sit there and they get all those drawers and they say, oh, my grandpa's had a heart attack, or so-and-so's in the hospital, can you take such-and-such over to whoever? Okay? They turn around, they happen to know such-and-such. I sat drove for several schools around. I don't know such-and-such. I can't do that. I couldn't take them over and let them do something. Or that student say, you know, we've had this emergency. I couldn't let them off because I didn't know them. I didn't know the parents. It means a lot to me that these bus drivers do know almost everybody. I love a small town. That's what we're all about. We like to know who is in our community and who is working with our kids. I don't want teachers in and out of here. I don't want somebody new on the block. I would prefer to see yous hire teachers in the area than way out of town and bringing them in. Because these people were raised here. And if they're raised here, they're good enough to teach here. Especially if they gone through the schooling. The bus drivers, they worked hard for what they have. It's not simple. If it was, there wouldn't be help wanted signs on all the other places. It's very, very important to all these bus drivers to make sure that these children are safe. You all talk about mileage? I don't know exactly about the buses and how yous work that. But we drive our personal rig up to the bus to be able to drive that route. Okay? Because yous start at the end of the route to school and back to the end of the route. The other places start from the school to the end of the route, to the school of the morning. From the school to the end of the route and park the buses back at the school of the night, or in the bus lane or wherever. Okay? We have to sit there and do what we can do. Instead of putting the extra mileage and the wear and tear on the bus and stuff, some, not all, use the personal vehicle to cut down on mileage. But you all count up all that mileage and use it to be able to get funded from the state. Correct? Or am I incorrect?
It's operating cost. We turn in all of the miles, but we, but we're reimbursed operating cost. All mileage, odometer readings have to go in, but it's not based on the, funding's not based on the odometer readings, it's based on operating cost.
Okay. Because I'm not sure-
You get a certain percentage of the operating cost.
Okay. So, are we shorting yous?
No, him driving to the, to where his bus is, is irrelevant to the, we turn the odometer reading in, but it doesn't affect-
You do that, but you gave a paper to Larry, I don't know, not too long ago, and I have it here. And the mileage that the school paid out was 175,000 miles. But the mileage that you turned into the state on your transportation report-
Correct.
Is like 212 or 208,000 miles.
Correct. Because we're, we're required to turn in miles from the first day of school to the last day of school. Understanding that your driving, any bus is driving more than just the route. I mean, whether it's a district-owned bus or a contractor bus, but we are required in our state report to turn in first day of school to the last day of school. Plus summer school. But, but we also turn in our operating cost. And we are, we are reimbursed a percentage of a percentage, actually. It's a percentage of a percentage of our operating cost, not based on odometer readings.
Okay, the only reason why I asked that was I was under the impression that there was an issue on the odometer readings.
There was a few, not many, but there were a couple.
And I know that sometimes they have to sit there and drive a different bus, so they may be-
Correct.
Okay, so that may fluctuate. And you do drive around, and you know the miles. So everything that you've driven with each of the drivers, as Dina said, should be the one and the main thing that's accounted for. Because that there is what is supposed to be there. I do. So that's already accounted for. There was a couple more things I just wanted to say. Weather. When the weather's bad, and Dr. Dial does his best to make sure and let everybody know. He gets up, he leaves at 5:10 in the morning. If the weather's bad, that's on a good day. If the weather's bad, he's leaving at 10, 10 to 5 to get up to his route. He gets up there, he has started the route, several of them have, and they call school off. Okay? They took that chance of going. It was so bad with him going up the hill to get there, that the vehicle wasn't even staying on the road. He still had to try to make it home. Thank God he didn't have kids on there. Other ones, they have had children on there. The weather is like everything else. I've seen it sit there be winter wonderland up there on top of Dogwood Hill and just be sunny and green down here. It's unbelievable. But because Dr. Dial has to cancel, everybody's like, why do we have to miss school? You know, that's going to be another makeup day. Well, there is reasons on the other side of the county. And he figured it out. So, there, there is a lot that's on a bus driver's shoulders. Now, the base pay. Yous are talking about never giving a raise on base pay. Okay? The base pay basically is a part of the other. Your miles on dirt and highway can change due to somebody moving out or leaving. But their base rate, yous aren't even giving raises on. You want them to stay flat, bottom dollar. And I don't think that that's right. When they have to repair that bus, when they have to go and purchase a new one, they're going to have to sit there and figure out on their base rate. They can't count on them dirt miles and them paved miles because they're fluctuating. That base rate is what's important just as much as it is on the other. And mileage. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Mr. Benson, do you have anything else on your agenda?
No, no, I, I just, maybe there might be questions. If there's no question, if not, I'm, I'm not there. Okay? Thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you.